Well, can I, can I welcome members and members of the public to Cabinet of Warwickshire County Council? Today, this is the 8th of April. And may I first of all just say that this is the last cabinet in this cycle of the administration before we have elections in about a month's time. And it is appropriate for me to say farewell and thanks to two of our members who I know are not going to be standing next time around. And I'm looking at them both, I've got Colin Hayfield and I've got Les Cable, who have both given much service to Warwickshire County Council, but actually also to the public of Warwickshire. And I really want to take this opportunity of saying on behalf of all of us at Cabinet, thank you very much, both of you. And in regards to Colin, he's definitely, he and I have followed a same timeline. We both joined in 2001, so that's 20 years ago, Colin, which is, where did that go? And, and I think Colin, you first went on to Cabinet in 2005, actually, having held many roles, adult social care. I think you've, you've done children's as well.
No.
Not childrens? No.
I did heritage leader, I did heritage.
I was coming to that. Libraries and heritage, you did communities as well.
I did adults.
Yeah.
Briefly finance and, not, not finance, I did property briefly.
Property, that's what we thought as well. And you did, and you did museums and you did heritage, just in case anyone should forget. But fantastic, and I think you're probably heading off to spend a little bit of time that you haven't been able to on one or two digs that you would very much like to. And, and I think there's, is there a book in there somewhere as well?
Hopefully, at least one.
At least one, well, excellent. We shall all look forward and you must keep in touch with us. But thank you for all you've done. It really is very much appreciated. On my side particularly, I want to thank you. You've been on the same journey as I've been and you've been a great challenger at the right time and all of that, you know, we, we all need Colin to give us that particular different look. And Les, just moving on to you, you know, just, I don't think you came in that cycle, but you were, you joined in 2005.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought, fantastic. And you've been on Cabinet for eight years. I think firstly, you were doing fire and rescue. And there were some very interesting times at that time that you got involved in. And since then, you've been doing adult social care brilliantly. And the leadership that you've shown on coming to an integrated care system has been tremendous. We've got a lot to be very grateful to you for. And I know it's going to be difficult to fill your boots in this particular regard. Your, your partnership working has been absolutely outstanding and has put Warwickshire on a really strong position as we move forward. What can I say but thank you, thank you so much for everything you've done. And this may be your last, both of you, but it certainly won't be one that we will ever forget in a hurry. I think Monica's hands up too, so I'm going to invite you in, Monica.
Thank you Chair. As Chief Executive, on behalf of all of the officers, the many officers who you've both worked with over the many years, our thanks and appreciation go to you as well. You've been very easy to work with, both of you, very supportive of officers and very collegiate in your approach. And I think really epitomise the one team that is Warwickshire that sees us work so well across both the officer and the member bodies. And I know that you take our very best wishes from officers to you as you go forward into this next chapter. And I do hope you'll stay in touch, so it's been an absolute pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you Monica. And Gerry, your hand is up.
Yeah, can I just echo the comments that have all been made? It's been great working with Colin and Les on different projects and sometimes on different sides of the fence, but generally we found a way through things. And, and it's been really good, so thank you from the Lookdown Group for everything that you've done for the county council and what you've represented and the way you've taken it forward. And I look forward to Colin's book.
Is it going to be a page turner, I wonder, I wonder? Helen?
Just to say the same, good luck in your ventures, whatever they are in the future, and hope you have a rest. And I kind of envy you not having to go out there and canvass and campaign as a member.
Don't we all?
Good luck.
Thank you, yes. And I, I should say, I think Les owes much time to his wife and I think your travels await you. I think it's worth saying that he may have been, you may have been with us since 2005, but actually you joined local politics many years ago. And I think it was 1980 when you became a member at the district council. So very many years of dedication to public, public service. So well done, all of you, and thank you very much. And we will miss you, we will miss you, but we will keep in touch and we will tell you how things go and keep your interests assuaged. Right, we'll get on with the business of the day. I have not heard of any apologies, are there any to be reported?
None that I've heard any of, Chair.
Thank you very much. So can I ask if anyone has any disclosures that they need to make of interest, either pecuniary or non pecuniary? No, none, none? So that moves us then swiftly on to the minutes of the previous meeting, which was held on the 18th of March. And we have them from pages eight, pages five to 10. And I'm going to ask if we can approve those, please? That's by raising the hand, as we may normally do. Two, three, four, eight. I'm possibly missing one. Les? Oh. Excellent. Thank you. That's unanimous support for that then, you can pop your hands down then. The next item is public speaking. I have not been told of any public speaking. So we can move on to the first major item of the day, which is the Revenue Investment Funds, page 2020 to 2021. And that you can be found on page 11, 11 to 16. Peter, it's you to introduce.
Thank you Chair. We have before us three proposals, allocation of funding from the Revenue Investment Funds for three projects, which are entirely consistent with the COVID recovery plan objectives. The first one is a safe and active travel, which is an important element contributing to climate change agenda and looks to capitalise on gains made during the COVID around increased walking and cycling. This is a two-year funding, £103,000. And it's, as I understand it, there's pretty much cross-party support for this initiative. The second one is the business start-up, jumpstart project. There's £107,000, will be used to support targeted work through Coventry and Warwickshire Reinvestment Trust. And it's a three years to support individuals of underrepresented and hard-to-reach communities looking to start up new businesses, especially social enterprises. As people kind of come out of furlough and looking to start up their own businesses, this is a support mechanism and we kind of patiently kind of push, push them in directions where they can get funding, support, et cetera, which we do for the county itself. And then the final one, which is the, the large chunk of money, is a leisure and tourism and leisure business support project. Again, this is a sector of industry in the county, which has considerably had considerable knock over the last 12 months because their revenues have virtually been nil. And they need, need the support to get them back on their feet once the lockdown is kind of, eases out and we can get these businesses started up. So there's £513,622 to support those who are busy, who need a little bit of support to get themselves going again and create the employment in those, sustain employment in those sectors. Like I say, I've got, it might look as if it's in more particular part of the county, but I assure you there is tourism all over Warwickshire and it will kind of be distributed where it's needed. So I have no hesitation to kind of promote these three different projects and I'm willing to take questions.
Thanks, thanks Peter. I've got Heather, you wanted to come in.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate how ready everything is to go once we're able to open up. The Visit Warwickshire website is, and marketing campaign is all there. North Warwickshire, talking about the George Elliot Foundation. There's tourism right across the county. And in these days of staycations, we want to make sure our economy here in Warwickshire gets every piece that it possibly can. Thank you.
Thanks very much. I don't have anyone else wishing to speak. Peter, oh, I have, Geoff Morgan. You're on mute, Geoff.
Thank, thank you. Peter, I'm interested in this jumpstart project, particularly since we're targeting people who are traditionally being underrepresented in the business sector. Have we got any interesting novel ways of contacting people in these communities? I mean, I'm, I'm sure that's the key to the success of the project.
Yeah, well, we kind of, we work hand in hand with the, the usual kind of, C W L E P. Will be one avenue where they kind of, a lot of, a lot of traffic comes through, kind of inquiries. There will be the Chamber of Commerce will channel those interests through to us as well, as, as does a small federation of business, federation of small businesses. So all the usual channels will be kind of used and we'll kind of give that advice and channel their support through all those different organisations. So yeah, it's, we, we kind of, it's a partnership project and I'm pretty sure it will do the job, do well.
Thank you, Peter.
Okay. I, I think that's it now, so Peter, back to you.
Thank you Chair. Upon that then, I would like to kind of recommend approval based on the page 11 and the recommendations one to three, so I'll seek your approval, thank you.
Those who want to support it, please raise your hands now. I think that is, that's unanimous support, Peter. Yeah.
Thank you Chair.
Right, so you can pop your hands down and we will then move on to the next item, which is, right, item three on page 17 to 36. And that's the Code of Corporate Governance. Cam Corr, over to you.
Thank you Chair, just muting myself, or unmuting myself even. The council's external auditors Chair asked us to review our code to ensure that there was commentary on each of the seven individual principles of good governance. We've now done that piece of work and the revised code is attached in appendix one to this report. The code therefore now follows the approach which was set out by SITFA, Guidance on Delivering Good Governance in Local Government. Moving on, the audit, the report itself has also been sent to Audit and Standards Committee, which also considered it in draft format. And that was in its last meeting on the 25th of March. And they were very supportive of it. What it does do is that, what we will need to do going forward is that we ensure the code is accessible to staff and wider public and we're working on communications to plan and to ensure that happens. And if you take questions, Chair, if there are any.
I'm not seeing a rush of hands at the moment. And of course, it has been to audit and standards, so well done. No, I think it, I think it's all yours, I'm afraid.
In which case, Chair, may I move to the recommendations I've set out on page 17 and see Cabinet's approval?
Yeah, so can we, can we go through that? That's unanimous Chair. Thank you very much, that's, that's good. Right, we, we can get rid of those. This is going well, we're going to be record time at this rate. It may not all be quite so good, but let's see. Next item is the Member Code of Conduct. Cam, again, this is going to be you and for those looking, it's on page 37. No, you're, you're on mute.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Girl error, I'm afraid. So this is a timely report as we move into elections and possibly have, possibly and have new members joining us in a few weeks' time. So the LGA published a model code of conduct back in December 2020. Councils have taken a variable approach to the model code with a number like us proposing to adopt elements of the model code rather than have it taking it wholeheartedly. So basically, it's a self, really, it basically says what it is on the tin and I'm really seeking for Cabinet's approval. And left there are questions, Chair.
Right, Gerry, you want to come in?
Not really a question, question really, more of a comment. I think I welcome the fact that we're upgrading the Code of Conduct to the LGA and actually bringing it all up to date really with the work that's been going on elsewhere. I think it was probably slightly longer overdue, so it's welcome, welcome edition.
I agree with that, I think it's, it's very timely and, you know, potentially we might have quite a turnover of, of new members. That's very good. But I do want to stress the importance of it is not just about member to member. It's very important to ensure that the, the way, way we interface with staff, with officers, the respect that's shown, it has been such a backbone of how we behave in, in Warwickshire. And I think it, it's shown by the fact that we haven't had a great deal of problems, that we haven't had many complaints. And I think it's, it's such an important way for us to continue to behave. And I hope it will continue in the same vein. Colin?
As an observation leader, like you, I, 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 I haven't needed to rely on a code of conduct very often over the last 20 odd years that I've been here. It's a mark of this place that we have a friendly relationship with just about every councillor and a good working, friendly, respectful relationship with officers. That's been a mark of Warwickshire. And it's been one of the reasons that it's been a pleasure to be a councillor in Warwickshire. You don't get the confrontation, the bitchiness and everything that you get in some district councils or other, or other authorities. So yes, let's go ahead and note this, get the new council to approve it. But let's hope that we continue not to need it very often.
Thank you. Andy Crump?
Thank you Leader. Yeah, and I haven't worked as a local government officer for nearly 31 years and been a councillor for a good while and almost poached term gamekeeper. And it is pleasing to see that the relationship between officers and members are on the whole really positive and even wanted to laugh at my jokes as well, yeah. So thank you for that. But I certainly agree with the, with the wise words of my esteemed colleague councillor Hayfield, who I will miss his, his wise words and comments as well. So yes, I totally agree with him and all this, and it is all about respect. So yeah, this is, it's really positive and I'm happy to support the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So that's the last hand. Cam, I'm back to you then for the recommendations or any final comments?
Just to say, Chair, I absolutely echo the comments that have been made by Gerry and Cabinet members. You know, we're very fortunate that one we get on with each other. I think we like each other, which is probably why, you know, we, we've been successful as a, as a team and as a group and as an organisation. And I think that's envied almost in many other county councils and councils per se. So I'm really pleased that this has been updated, it needed updating. And I'm also very pleased to be presenting it and bringing it here before you. So thank you for letting me have my final words. And may I put the recommendation before you, which is printed on page 37 to Cabinet for your approval? Thank you Chair.
Thank you, we'll go to the vote and we'll just wait a moment. Won't be missing anyone? Yeah, there we are. That's unanimous support, thank you all very much. We can pop hands down. Agenda item five, which is on page 67. Andy Crump to introduce, Fire Control Replacement Systems.
Thank you Leader, I'll be, try to be brief as everybody else. Since I became portfolio holder in 2019, we've invested significantly in Warwickshire Fire and Rescue as part of our transformation process. And we're continuing to do so now. We want to bring in a cloud-based fire control system that is flexible, meets legislative, will enhance our business community and our business resident and improve our remote working. It, it meets all these aspirations. And I think that says it all, I'm happy to take any questions. And we'll be gone now, thank you.
Right, just looking to see if anyone wants to come in. I am, oh yes, Heather.
Thank you Chair. Andy, I just wanted to say, I was really, really pleased to hear that Warwickshire has been appointed as a lead authority on for fire services with the National Fire Chiefs Council with regard to climate change. And I think we as Cabinet would want to offer our congratulations to Ben Brook for taking this lead and putting Warwickshire the national forefront on this topic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much Heather.
He's, he's really positive. I know Mr. Brooks listening, he's on the call, so I'm sure he'll appreciate your kind words. But it shows that Warwickshire's got a reputation of being a great place to work for and also promoting its staff and having a succession programme. And when only national leads there are on national leads and other organisations and other committees and parts of the government. So yeah, really good job. And obviously that they come to Warwickshire because they've got such a wonderful portfolio holder. And I will move the recommendations on page 67 and seek, seek Cabinet approval, if that's okay with you Leader.
Yep, yep, we'll go to the vote then, thank you. It's unanimous Chair, thanks very much Monica, so we can move the, move our hands down. Next item, just get back to the agenda, is agenda item six. This is to be found on page 73. This is the Establishment of a Dynamic Purchasing System for Business Support and Services. It is my report to introduce. And it's basically, it basically says what it does. But the principle of why are we doing it is it is about modernising our system and allowing a more flexible approach to commissioning, to shaping how we commission this. The advantage of it to those who wish to be considered by the county council as a contractor is that they can join this at any time, rather than only when we are putting out a tender for, for an item. So, so they can become part of this and they can be called off at any time. It gives us more flexibility, it will give an advantage to contractors and it also will help us to be more efficient in the way we commission work. We, we do require a number of services to advise us and give us support. And this will help us in choosing that quickly, more efficiently. And I think ultimately it should save us money, Peter, so you'll no doubt be happier at that. I'm happy to open up for any questions if anyone would wish to come in now. Peter? You're on mute at the moment.
Thank you Leader. Hopefully, this, this is, good procurement systems is a key to basically saving money. You, you can spend money unwisely and if you've got bad procurement systems, you are spending money unwisely. So this, this is a welcome update in terms of our procurement systems. And also it means that Warwickshire can, can also get more money, more, more bang for its bucks is the kind of phrase, but yeah, I'm happy to approve this, no problem at all.
Is there anyone else who wishes to come in? Then I'm going to, sorry, I'm just juggling with a number of different reports on different tabs. If there's no one else, then I'm going to go back to the recommendations, which can be found, as I said, on page 73. We've got two recommendations, which is to, in effect, approve the establishment of the DPS and to approve the commencement of the procurement process, which I ask you to vote on now. That's unanimous Chair. That's excellent, thank you all very much for that. Hands down, that's it. Right, so we've got item seven, which is the, Les, this is your report, the approval to tender the Integrated Community Equipment Services.
Thank you, thank you Izzy, yeah, this is, this is one of Warwickshire's great partnerships and does, does start it way before, before I was doing this role because it's some 15 years old, we've, we've led it all, all that time. What the service delivers is equipment to enable health, healthy living when you're disabled or in, in need for our elderly residents across Warwickshire. And it also services some out of county users who are registered with a Warwickshire GP. I mean, it is a joint contract with social care and, and health and, and what will now be one CCG. And allowances made within the paperwork as, as we tender for it being one CCG rather than three. That has been dealt with under section 75. And we've, as I said, been the lead commissioner for 15 years. And this will remain the case because we have the expertise and we have the infrastructure in place to, to continue with this contract. The existing contractors' contract finishes in August 2022, so obviously we have to now start the re-tendering process, which is open to, to all. And we have some considerable expressions of interest to date. So we, we support needs for our vulnerable adults, children, so across all our age groups. And it's all about our policy of remaining independent and in your own home wherever is possible. And the CCG's perspective is to arrange health needs. So a lot of this obviously is done in partnership with the CCGs and, and our own social, social care. It's a very successful service. It's a very good record for recycling, so we recycle some. 97% of all the returned equipment we get, and we very actively get any equipment returned. And that represents some 99% by value. So, you know, it really is a successful service and praise to our office. Uh, and praise to our officers who in partnership really make this work. So it'll be a new contract for five years, uh, plus a possibility of another, another five. And it is a substantial contract. Um, last year's spend was, um. Five, five point six, six million and the current spend over ten months is five point two. And we've seen a rise of around five percent a year in, in demand and, and value. So, um, a, a considerable contract that gives a great service, uh, to the residents that we need, need to serve. So, um, there are three recommendations, Chair, if I may, that we approve the, the move to go to procurement. That we, um, approve a section seventy-five with the CCGs to continue to manage as we do now. Uh, and approve procurement activities that links it to teddy care, assisted technology, self-assessment, self-purchase. Which is the way we are progressing with all our care as we ena- enable people to become more dependent. Uh, and we satisfy needs, uh, rather than having a, you know, a prescription. Um, so people may, we can serve people with what they need, which is the way forward for all our social care and health contracts. I'm happy to take questions.
Thanks very much. Yes, I've, I've actually got four recommendations down, which, um, are on pa- on page seventy-seven. But whilst you check that out, I'll, um, see if there's any.
I've got my, my briefing before me, not the.
Okay, yeah, on, well, I'll, I can run through those quickly. Uh, are there any questions for Les on the ICS, uh, on the, on the integrated, uh, equipment store? Um, no.
Oh, thank, thank you, Chair, a fine, clean sweep, no questions, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, as, as I say, there's just the four, um, that we, we're asked to approve and, uh, they are, as. Les has said, there's, um, the last, the fourth one is that Cabinet approves the ICE. E procurement activity to incorporate the following linked services, which is telling, actually, I think you said that one, but there are. Yeah, can we agree those that are set out on page seventy-seven, please, colleagues? Unanimous, Chair. Excellent, well done, Les. Um, it, it's always good to end on a high note, isn't it?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. Um, excellent. So on to item eight, which is strategic risk management framework. And Peter, this is yours, your report, please.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, it looks like I've got the swan song of this particular electoral process. Uh, before the election, uh, before I go into this, I'd like to, uh, say my thanks to Colin and, um, Les. For your contributions to the Cabinet. You've always been welcome. I've enjoyed working with you and we will miss you. Um, so going on to risk, um, strategic risk management framework. Uh, is a combination of work over the last year and, uh, that to review our approach and attitude to our risk as an organisation. And it's a timely piece of work because, uh, as we go into a recovery period, and as you know from the last budget. That we're kind of going down avenues where we're looking towards, uh, rescuing the economy and, uh, uh, looking after people. Uh, post-Covid. So we need to look at our appetite for risk and this is where this framework has come from. And this basically kind of is a framework in which we can set a standard in terms of where we want to go with our risk, strategy, risks. And all our projects are going forward over the next, uh, few years. Uh, and it will take into kind of three lines of defence against risk, ownership, oversight and insurance. And, um, this is being looked at by the Audit, Audit and Standards Committee. And I've given it their wholehearted support as a good piece of work. And on, on, with a kind of a seal of a rule from the Audit and Ethics Committee, uh, Ordinance Stand, Audit and Standards, um. I would then quite willing to take questions, please.
Thank you, Peter. Right, uh, opening up, um. Do you know, I'm not sure there's anyone going to have an input. Oh, well, Cam, well done. Oh, muted.
Your, it's final, end of year and I'm making cheap mistakes, I'm like today. But, um, I just wanted to pick up, the auditor said this was a fantastic report. And they highly recommended it and said it was an excellent piece of work. And I just wanted to put my thanks on the record really to Geraint and Chris Norton. Uh, and all the members of the Risk and Corporate Policy Team, because I think this is a great piece of work. Um, and, you know, it wasn't easy to put together, so, um, my thanks to all of them, really. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Cam. So Peter, um, the final word is with you.
Uh, thank you for the comment and, uh, as there's no other questions, I would like to seek your approval as laid out on page seventy-seven. And the recommendation laid out there. Thank you.
This is a recommendation to approve, so. Unanimous, Chair. Thank you, um, thank you all very much, uh, for that. I'm afraid we do have to go into the usual process of, um, going into the private session. So that we can prove the minutes of the last meeting. And I would just ask, I've just lost it for the moment. I would just like to read the, if I can get there. Uh, that members of the public be excluded from the meeting for the items mentioned below. On the grounds that their presence would involve the disclosure of exempt information and define.